Good evening. I'd like to call to order the common council meeting for February 6, 2017. Please stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father, please, if you'd lead us. Thank you.
Christ is God. We thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you, God, how you continue to bless us and keep us. Father, we ask you to continue to restore in all of us, Lord, a clean heart. Give us a clean spirit. Help us to understand how important it is for us to come together as a community. God, we ask you to continue to bless all of our first responders. Be with them and watch over them. Continue to keep them safe, Father God. We thank you for their service. God, thank you for all the staff we have in our city. Be with them, watch over them, and continue to encourage them, Father, when they get down. God, I ask you to be with this council. Be with each and every person on this council. Continue to watch over them. Be with their families, Lord. Continue to protect them. Keep your heads protection around them. Help them to understand that they've got to work together. We need them to work together because they represent all of us. Help them to understand it's okay to disagree. We don't have to be disagreeable. But help us to understand, Lord, that we're all trying to get to the same place. That's to make sure that this city is a great place to live, a great community for our families, and a great community for my grandkids that grew up in. So I just really want them to do a good job. So, God, we ask you to continue to bless us and keep us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a row call, please. Yes. Counselperson White. Counselperson Dobney.
Here.
Counselperson Yon.
Present.
Counselperson Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Gill.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Counselperson Rodriguez.
Present.
Let the record reflect, all nine members are present. Thank you. I need the minutes from our regular proceedings of January 19, 2017 approval. I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Minutes.
Minutes, thank you. Sorry. Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 19, 2017.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The abstaining due to absence.
Okay. It's noted. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now we come to approve of the agenda. And keep in mind that we need to add the resolution that's in front of you for the authorized investment of public funds. And we'd like to add that to be number 14. So if I could have a motion for the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Heather, claims to be approved. We'll do the general claims first, please.
We have general fund, or general claims, all the other funds other than parks, for
I did review claims and everything was in order. They look great.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Sorry. On page 14, under Public Safety, Lloyd, the very top groupings, the last one, it has Verizon Wireless monthly charges. Should that be a Lloyd expense? Shouldn't that be coming out of the other budget?
That would probably be for some phone services or purchase of a phone, yes.
So not monthly charges?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just on the monthly charges bill, yes.
Thank you.
Nothing further? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And we have park claims for $306,606.22.
Make a motion to approve.
For a second.
I'll second.
I got a motion, a second pass, park claim. Any further discussion?
Just a note. The claims went out to the authority and there were a couple of questions. Bounced back and forth, but I think everything was resolved this afternoon.
And all the claims were in order. We just had a few questions, a few things, but it got taken care of. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a report of a clerk tonight? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move right on into Larry Wilder, unfinished business, 2017 OR2, an ordinance implementing procedures for approving capital expenditure purchased for many calendar year.
You guys recall that was approved. Last meeting, you read it, passed on first, two, three, perfunctory ordinance can adopt on a regular basis.
Motion to approve on the final reading?
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Maples. Sorry.
That's all right. I'm just going to do it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We got Heather McCaff. And keep in mind, counsel, we will have a public hearing on this. So if nothing has changed, Heather, from the first and the second, if anything's still changed?
No, nothing's changed.
Anything from counsel before opening up public hearing? Okay. At this time, I'll officially open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wish to speak for or against this additional appropriation? Come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none. I'm officially closing public hearing. I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved. Second. Motion for the final read?
Yes.
Yeah, so moved. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Move right into new business, which I am pleased to introduce Wendy and Matt Hall are here from One Southern Indiana to give us the update, the economic development program. And I always look forward to seeing you guys.
Good. Thank you so much, Madam Chairperson and members of the council. We appreciate the time on the agenda. And thank you again for your contribution to One Southern Indiana and our economic development efforts. Matt is going to give you the bulk of the presentation to really report on what's taken place in the last 12 months or so, economically developmentally speaking, in terms of what's taken place with both attraction of new businesses as well as the expansion of existing businesses that are here. So we've got a report that's being put together and is now being placed in front of you. And many of you all know Matt Hall. He's been with One Southern Indiana or its predecessor organization for 26 years. He asked me not to give you the exact year, but the truth is, it's been 26 years. And across the state of Indiana, he has developed quite a reputation of being an economic developer who is really in touch with his projects. And I say that because as, you know, we do business development of any type, knowing the details and knowing how to maintain control of your projects is really the key to success. And I'll give him that compliment publicly because it's something that we all do take -- we don't want to take it for granted privately around the office. So Matt's going to go through the presentation packet for you, and then I'll wrap up here at the end. Matt?
Thank you, Wendy. And thanks to President Gill and members of the council for allowing us to talk about what we've accomplished over the last year. And then we'll put it in some perspective time-wise for the organization. I am going to go through this report that has the City of Jeffersonville's logo on the front. Says a partnership for progress. So if you'll humor me, I'll run through what these numbers mean in terms of the City of Jeffersonville's return on its investment in the economic development program. Page two shows how many projects that we have attracted as an organization or expanded as an organization. The top pie chart shows that there are 148 projects that have been announced since the formation of One Southern Indiana in July of '06. The orange part of that pie is existing company expansions. And the green part, which shows 34 companies that are new to our region for the first time. And if you'll see the bar chart just below that, that is a breakout of the municipalities and where those projects are located. And you'll see Jeffersonville has 79 of those 148 projects that we've announced. So if you go to page three, it will show that 148, those 148 projects represent commitments for 11,465 new jobs in Clark and Floyd counties. And again, that divide shows you how many of those are existing companies that expanded and how many of those are new jobs to our region for the first time. And again, the chart below will show you that out of those 11,000 new jobs, 8,519 of those are within the City of Jeffersonville. Page four shows you, and this is the number I get most excited about, this is the $413 million annually that those new jobs represent for our region. And you'll see that about, it's almost split in half on how much of those are expansions of our new payroll to our existing businesses and new businesses. And you will also see that Jeffersonville has $304 million of that $413 million that are--
Are all of these, are all the numbers you're giving, all of them from July 1, 2017?
Correct. That's correct. And then on page five, we show what the taxable capital of those 148 projects is. And we reached the billion-dollar mark recently, so we're excited about that. You'll see that in Jeffersonville, $842 million of that is new to the City of Jeffersonville. Page six is a very simple calculation of what that return would be. We simply took every dollar that we've received from the City of Jeffersonville for our economic development efforts and divided it by that taxable capital number. And you'll see that for every dollar that was invested, there is a return of $3,264.95 in new taxable capital. Likewise, on page seven, we took that payroll number and divided that by the same number that Jeffersonville has invested. And that number is $1,180.09 annually that's being returned on Jeffersonville's investment. The following page, it looks like the number got taken off. It must be page eight. That is a breakdown of our business retention and expansion program, our visits. This is a program that One Southern Indiana started when there was no formalized BRE program in Clark and Floyd counties. And we break that out by the number of where those visits are located. And we've done 2,339 visits to existing businesses. And you will see the majority of those have been in Clark County. This is interesting, the blue chart. This is the number of projects by location, where these projects generated, the economic development projects generated. And you will see that inside Clark and Floyd counties, 272 of those were generated there. Outside of Clark County, 669. So what that means is, we have a lot of outside interest that's in Clark and Floyd counties, but it doesn't mean that they necessarily come to fruition. If you go back to that very first chart, you will see, we actually are, get more bang for our buck by investing in our existing businesses and helping them expand. And as I tell our team at the office, every time a company expands here, that's a victory in retention because they can move at any time. So we have a conscious effort to keep those companies in Clark and Floyd counties. Page nine is sort of an overview of our new business attraction efforts and what we do. We routinely submit Jeffersonville for projects that either come through a number of sources, the state of Indiana, some of our utility partners, or some of our regional partners or other Lidos. We get those leads and then we submit properties that are applicable for those projects. We also host company and project representatives routinely in Southern Indiana. We give tours. We do lots of tours. We tell them, you know, it's a great place to live, great place to do a business, to locate a business. And then we take them and show them what the community looks like. Project listing management, that's a database that we maintain. And we bring, we work with developers and real estate owners and brokers and everyone else to make sure that we maintain a database of available greenfield sites and available buildings in all of Southern Indiana. And then, of course, we provide ongoing support to River Ridge Commerce Center, which is sort of a special client, as you can imagine. On page 10, it's, I won't go through every one of these, I promise, but this is sort of a snapshot of our domestic and international marketing. So we belong to several groups, one being, for example, the South Central Indiana Economic Development Group. It's a group of Lidos, local economic development organizations like ours. We sort of pool our resources so that we can do much more broader marketing for our area. And therefore, even if we aren't there physically, we know that Jeffersonville is represented by someone in the group. And we've done things like taking our message to Hanover Mesa last year, which is the largest industrial fair in the world, and told them the Jeffersonville story. Made them aware that, you know, Southern Indiana isn't necessarily Evansville. And we do the same thing with the state. We partner with them on doing visits to site location consultants in Chicago and New York. Again, we're trying to get our message out, make folks aware of what we, where we are and what we are, as opposed to expecting the customer to come to us. The next page is our business retention and expansion overview. Again, we spend a lot of time and focus on our business retention and expansion because we want to make sure if there's a problem in a business, we get ahead of that, as opposed to hearing that they're going to leave. We're not always successful in that, but for the most part, we're able to make the case for them to do those projects or expand their base here, as opposed to go somewhere else and do that investment and create those jobs somewhere else. And through that, we've created the Metro Manufacturing Alliance, which has been one of our most successful programs, highly popular. It is billed as for manufacturers by manufacturers. So we let them come in and tell us what are their challenges, what it is that they want or need. It's sort of a best practices exchange. And you will see that we have more than 25 Jeffersonville manufacturers who participate in that group. I'm going to turn this back over to Wendy to talk about some of the advocacy that One Southern Indiana is involved with.
Thanks, Matt. So second hand up that Matt gave you was our 2017 advocacy agenda. And I think I was here and presented maybe the 2016 advocacy agenda, so I thought it'd be nice to follow up and let you know that we still maintain an advocacy role within the community. It's not an active staffed role, but it's something that we, as an organization, look at. There are five primary pieces of our advocacy agenda. And the first, I've talked to many of you about this probably in the last two or three months. And the first is career-ready workforce and educational initiatives. As Matt talks about those 11,000-plus jobs that have been committed to over the last 10 or 11 years, those folks aren't going to stay in our community if they can't fill those positions. And so we are working with as many partners who are, will come to the table with us to talk about some of those workforce challenges. And we've included that in our advocacy agenda. Infrastructure and transportation is a second category of our advocacy efforts. And anything from road and highway funding to communications and fiber infrastructure, that too is key for economic development. The third is business-friendly tax and fiscal initiatives. We know that some of the businesses are going to face an impact from the toll, the tolling of the bridges. So we're trying to maintain our, stay up on that and understand what that impact is going to be. And we are also looking for proper use of the tax and regulatory environment in general. The fourth area is regional initiatives. And many of you have heard us talk about our regional cities initiative, or the state of Indiana's regional cities initiative, which was funded in 2015. We were not successful in putting forth an application to be considered for that designation. And it's a shame because the state of Indiana has given away to date $126,600,000 to the communities that did. However, we're not giving up. And as recently as today, I'd like to report that House Bill 1286 passed out of the Indiana House today. This is a bill that takes some of the concerns that were addressed during regional cities, namely, the concern that eminent domain would be power given to the regional development authority. And it makes that an option as opposed to an automatic authority. So our local representatives, Steve Stummler, Ed Clare, Steve Davison, and Karen Engelmann put forth this bill, passed out of committee last Tuesday, and passed out of the full house today. That's really fast for those of you who watch those type things. So we're pretty excited about that. The fifth area of our advocacy agenda is civic engagement. And that is really how we, how we work with our businesses to give them access to information, but also to the policymakers and elected officials that are impacting the other four areas of our advocacy agenda. The final document that Matt has given to you, well, actually, there's two, is what we call our tick sheet. Since 2006, when we started tracking all of the projects that OneSI has worked on, these are the details of that. And, you know, unless you're really looking for something specific, it may not mean a lot to you other than a reference document. But if you want to know what type of commitments have been made per project over that 10-year period, that information is included there. And then finally, we just wanted a little bit of a brag sheet on our industry recognitions to let you know that we're a stable organization. We're respected, not just amongst our, from our partners, but also our peers from both throughout the state of Indiana and the region. And we're pretty proud of what we get done with a small team. Our total staff is at 13 FTEs, full-time equivalent employees. And we're very proud of the bang that we get for the buck that we pay for our staff.
Just to add to that, we want to point out under 2016, under that recognition form, the Outstanding Executive of the Year, Wendy, from the Indiana Chamber Executives Association, you bragged on Matt publicly. I wanted to make sure that we bragged on you two as well. You guys have a great team.
Thank you. Thank you. I was expecting him to do that, but he didn't. No, I'm just kidding.
Oh! Ouch!
Well, this Matt did. Thank you. The advocacy agenda? Yes. Make sure-- Wendy, I don't know if you want to plug the date for the next elected officials roundtable? I think I know what I'm hoping to have. Absolutely. So one of the things that we've done is started inviting elected officials to a roundtable. No agenda, no, it's not driven by us unless the group asks us to do something. But we have our next one coming up February 16. It is a four o'clock meeting. It's going to take place before one of our business networking events, our five o'clock networking event at the Indiana American Water Facility there on Middle Road. But it's four o'clock, February 16. All are invited. We have not determined that there is a concern about having a quorum there, but I will ask you to defer to your counsel if there's a concern about having, having a majority there and how that would work.
Is there a concern, counsel?
Sounds like a chance public meeting to me.
Well, there are no decisions being made, but that's, again, that's not, not an attorney, and I wouldn't dare give you counsel on that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your attention, and we appreciate your partnership. Thanks.
Thank you all.
We move to Heather. You have 2017 OR, well, that'd be four, I guess, would be an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
The first one is for the street department for barricades. I know that there was a lot of emails running around on that one. And then the second one is in the sanitation fund. And that is for cell phones. You know how on your cell phone bill, you have your normal monthly charge, and then you also have like a $25 charge for upgrade equipment? That's where we're trying to get equipment to be on the equipment line and the service to be on a service line. So that's where that's coming from.
Okay.
Which is to the point where you saw that claim earlier today.
Motion to approve on the first and second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. To prove it, 2017 OR4 and the first and second. Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Heather, you're still up. We have an ordinance of additional appropriation.
This one is for, the first ones for Abbey Road equal out to be $50,000. This is for the potential city partner donations that would go into this fund. This would allow them to spend those donations if they receive them. And then they know that, you know, you're not allowed to spend the money unless we actually receive the money. It's not like it's being funded from any other of your funds. It's all from donations. Or I don't know if they're getting any money from vendors or any of that kind of stuff for Abbey Road. Any of that revenue that they would get.
There is--
And, oh, sorry. And then the last one, the big one, is the Community Crossing Grant. And that is to appropriate the $1 million that we got the grant for and the $1 million that we had to have the local match for out of our special LOAT fund for the East 10th Street project. Do we have any questions on that one?
Make a motion to approve 2017 OR5 on the first and second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Pass 2017 OR5 on the first and second. Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Wilder. We are, we have the resolution for common council, the City of Jeffersonville authorized investment of public funds.
Everybody's got a copy of this, correct? Thanks to Vicki because obviously I'm, I like the Dana Falcon. Because last night I kind of stumbled this way. So--
Two C.
Two C.
Two C.
I decide not to fire you just yet.
Yeah, well, you know, you got my letter of resignation. It's coming when I turn it in. So this is the authorization for the city to invest the public funds. And this is another kind of perfunctory ordinance that has a two-year period of time where you will now authorize the investment of those funds. And in two years, Lisa will call me on Super Bowl Sunday and say, hey, by the way, don't forget to do this again. And that's, it's, again, it's just another matter of business to move forward.
And I won't be calling if the Packers are playing. I know better.
Don't call me if the Packers are playing.
Resolution one.
No, two.
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 Motion to approve, resolution 17R2.
Second.
Got a motion, pass 2017 R2. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Browns are playing. They're off.
Is there any department heads here tonight? I don't see any. Okay. Was there any public comment? Anybody sign up for anything?
No.
Okay, no. So we will go to council comments. And as I put out in the email, we have got to make our appointment to the Arts Commission. So they'll do that right off the bat. I don't want to go down and come to you if somebody has something they need to say. So I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Officially tonight, we, we need to appoint five people. One is the appointee from the council, and then the remaining four. And so I don't know what order. I know there's, there's four, five, maybe more names. So I don't know if we just throw out all the names first and then go down and vote. That's the best way to do that, or what? The names, the names that I had sent out to everyone were Paul Northam, final's Paul, John McCarthy. Jay Ellis has removed his name because he was approached about working on a steering committee downtown. And so scratch Jay's name. And then Melissa Goforth. So there's three names that we have. Any other names?
I could amend Deb Henderson, Secretary for J and L. She's also a member of the Franklin Commons Neighborhood Association.
And that is the name that you threw out early on, isn't it? Okay.
Other names?
Any other names?
Dustin had mentioned wanting to be on also.
I know. Would that be instead of Nathan? Because I know Nathan wants to be on there, and he's been on there before. So I'll put Nathan's name on there. Yeah, Nathan.
So we have six names. We have five appointments.
Three, four, five, six. Any other names?
I had spoken with Jay Ellison. We were talking about being on the commission and the idea that came up about the steering committee, which is for the arts and cultural district. And in that conversation, you know, he was talking about how, you know, as the head of Jeff Mainstreet, that the Arts and Cultural District was within his boundaries. And as there was talk about public art being a citywide, moving further east and north, that it would be more appropriate for him to be on that steering committee and me being on the commission. Although I am sent here by residents of the First District, I do make decisions with the rest of you on things that affect the city, citywide. And so, I also spoke the last meeting about my interest. Back when the Arts Commission, back when we first had an arts administrator, the idea, Nathan had come to the Urban Enterprise Association, and we had paid either one-half or one-third of the salary of the arts administrator at the time, and that was the very first endeavor that we, that the city engaged in. We sat through the different presentations and selected arts administrator, and then it progressed to what we have now. I've also participated in some of the local projects. Only one, I believe, in actual selection of the project, which were the Lights Out in Claysburg. But I look at this, I value the art along with Nathan and the rest of the council and think that it would be a good commission to serve on, and I would look forward to serving with Nathan and the rest of the commission.
I would just add that from the beginning, I had mentioned that I believe that when we have commissions, boards, that they, we'll need to make them citizen boards and involve as many citizens as possible, where we're not relegated by law to have, like Planning Commission, you know, as an example, we're supposed to have ones on there. And I believe firmly and strongly that we should only have one council member on there. You know, just repeat that, and it's Dustin and I have spoken about this, and he understands that, and I understand he wants to be on it, and I appreciate that. He's certainly welcome to attend any meetings we have, but I feel strongly, I know I've met with a couple council members, Kelly and Matt, in particular about it, and you guys understand, you know, kind of, I guess where I'm coming from. So, you know, I guess now we just vote. I will go unless somebody says otherwise. I'll go, start with Paul, and just go down the list. Unless you want us to vote on the council people first, I don't care.
So, the ordinance, what we've said is there must be one council person.
Yes.
But there could, we could vote all of us on there.
Absolutely.
And then this person, the one on this list I did not know, John, as far as M.
McCarthy.
That's the person who currently, he's been there since the go.
Yeah, the four names that I'd put forth, they'd been on there for years, and because we've expanded it, basically doubled in size, and we've got four new ones. The mayor's appointments are all new. We talked about it, the best way to keep the continuity going, at least the first year, was to try to keep as many as the existing as possible. At our last meeting, I asked all those members if they were interested. I said, if you're interested, be sure and let the council know, because they're going to vote on it. All of them said they would like to be on it again. They find it enjoyable and worthwhile. And so, it wasn't until tonight that I found out that, about Jay dropping off, but...
To refresh your memory, you remember when we did the artwork that's out when you come into our chambers? John actually helped. He was one of the ones that were there with Melissa that helped us with that. He volunteered for all the arts. I mean, he's...
Yeah, he is.
You do know, well, you met him, but I'm trying to refresh your memory, so...
And are these for one year?
They're staggered, and we haven't determined the stagger as of yet. I thought potentially at the first meeting, we would notify the folks, and I don't know if we draw it out of a hat, or we just say, here's how we're going to stagger them.
Do we already know?
Three years stagger.
Do you already know, over to a three-year stagger?
Three years. That's part of the ordinance. Three years.
Yeah, I guess I should have read that. Sorry. You did. It just went on top of your mind.
Yeah, it's not top of mind. I understand.
Now, did we or did we not appoint Nathan? I knew we started to, and then there was discussion, but did we or did we not?
No, we didn't.
Did not? Okay.
Are all of the mayor's appointment citizens? Are there any that are?
Of Jeff? There's one that's from Utica, I believe.
Oh, I thought she was wanting to know if there's any elected official on there.
There are no...
In general.
Right. And at some point, I think I already mentioned that as well, at some point, I think we should amend this when this person rolls off that's not from Jeff, to make them Jeff residents. It's Jeff Public Art, and we have plenty of people that want to be on it, but that's for down the road. You know, the mayor followed the rules. I mean, he didn't do anything out of the ordinary. I just, that was an oversight, I think, on our part. So, any...
I'll start yourself.
I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Northam.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, we got Paul.
Make a motion to appoint John McCarthy.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for John McCarthy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? John McCarthy is approved.
I move to nominate myself and Nathan.
I'll second that.
Say that again, now.
I move to nominate myself and Nathan. Samuel.
I would make a motion to appoint Melissa Goforth.
Well... Motion on the table.
I'll second it.
We're doing one at a time, though. So, you want to do them one at a time, or are we doing both together?
I don't think you can do them both together.
I didn't think so either, but...
It's not a, we don't have to, it's not me against him. It's not a competition. It's not a requirement that only one councilman can be on the commission.
No, we're making one appointment at a time. You threw out two names.
Right.
You want to throw out one name and then throw out another name? Do them separate? You're wanting to keep both names together?
Yeah.
And I second it.
Okay. So, I did have a second. Okay. All those in favor?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call.
Dustin, how many boards are you on?
You're called for discussion, person for...
Yes, I am.
There we go. You got discussion.
Charity hasn't called for discussion. Madden, we have some discussion.
Okay, I'll allow if we keep it brief.
I'm just curious how many boards you're on.
I don't have a number in mind.
So, you're on UZ, and I'm not here to answer to you. Planning, you just got appointed to the Cassie Board through UZ. Now, you want to be on Arts. I'm just, I'm kind of with Nathan on citizens being on boards.
Okay, well, let's do the motion, and we'll see how this...
Well, it can be voted down, and then...
Okay, no, I'm just trying to figure out how to do the roll call vote.
It's one motion together to vote on two.
Your people.
To vote on whether you're going to do that.
Right.
This is a vote on the two, it's a vote on that procedure.
No.
No, it's a vote on the two.
It's a vote on the two.
Yes or no for two? It's a vote on the two people.
Dustin, or councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Sestavny?
No.
Councilperson John, Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
We're doing both of them at the same time?
Yeah.
No.
Councilperson Gill?
No.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Councilperson Rodriguez?
No.
Five nos, four yays.
I'll make a motion to, for Melissa Goforth.
Can you just slow down just a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Okay, Melissa, all right.
Did it get a second?
I did.
All in favor?
I didn't have a second. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not hear that. So, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Let Ms. Goforth.
I didn't know we were...
Yeah, Ms. Goforth.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, Melissa is on.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. White.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
And so far, we've done Paul Northam, John, and Melissa.
Yes.
Got two more.
With the discussion is that I think we should put Deb Henderson on here. The J&amp;LA's had a rep on that board from the beginning of it. They do work with the Arts. They do projects in everybody's neighborhood, not just downtown.
Well, we can, we can make the motions for...
I'm sorry, excuse me. Excuse me. Wait, 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 wait. J&amp;LA does not do projects in every neighborhood. They do projects in neighborhoods that are participants of J&amp;LA. To clarify.
We often do them in other neighborhoods, to clarify. I don't think I've ever seen you at one of those meetings.
I think I've been to plenty of events in other neighborhoods.
Probably been at National Night Out a couple times.
And I've been to J&amp;LA events also.
Which one?
And if you, I've been to your meetings when they've been down here in the First District, and I've been to your fundraiser.
The point is, if you've been to them, that's good. I think that it's a good representation of our city to have somebody on there besides all the city council people that we have on boards.
Who has been the J&amp;LA representative in the past?
I was one.
On the Arts Commission? Okay. I didn't realize that.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second for Dustin White's on the floor. I'd like to take that to the vote, and if it's voted in favor, or if it's voted down, then we can entertain your motion.
Roll call vote, please, and like some discussion.
You want discussion now?
Good. You know, it's clear it's going to be either Nate, it seems like it's going to be Nathan or Dustin. I just want to say that Nathan, it's, in my opinion, it should go to Nathan. He's started up, he's carried it this far, and it's nothing against Dustin. Dustin's very involved with everything downtown, he's involved in a lot of things, and I respect that he's willing to put more time into Arts. But for me, I'm going to vote for Nathan. Just want to put it out there, so. I'm not sure, it seems kind of funny the way we're throwing out all these motions, but I just wanted to explain where my vote's going.
And I just want to make, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just add that I would plan to vote for Nathan, too. I don't know that it has to be either or. And I know, you know, Mr. Samuel and I talked about this a couple weeks ago, and I understand that he has some hesitation serving on the commission with Dustin. I know there's been a lot of friction this last year and, you know, 14 months. I think, I would hope that we could put those personal things aside for, you know, the good of the Arts Commission. I said that if, I said early on that if Dustin wanted to be on, that I would support that, and even more so that one of the commission members has said that they want to come off and be on the steering committee, I got to support that even more. I think that a lot of focus has been on the First District, and Dustin is the elected representative from the First District specifically. We represent the First District as well, as does Nathan. But I think that there's been a tradition on the council, in my experience, of supporting a councilperson who wants to be involved in this district, and that's why I'm going to support him. And I would hope that there would, this contention could dissipate, and we could move on and do some good things and at least attempt to work together a little bit. I mean, I shook Dustin's hand outside. He said, can we bury the hatchet? I said, sure. But I still feel firmly that one council member needs to be on here, not two. And if Dustin has voted in, then I'm going to nominate Deb Henderson next, and we'll have our commission. So, it's, I'm going to work with Dustin, but that's just where it is. I mean, nothing has changed from the beginning, from when I talked to anybody I've talked to. Nothing has changed. You know, when it comes to Arts, it's citywide, anyway. We spent a lot of time and a lot of effort doing art downtown, but really, we need to expand it out in other districts.
And I agree with that.
And I'm just saying that to focus on the First District, that we need to have a vibrant, great downtown, and if we're moving in that direction, that's awesome. But I'm just saying, I don't see that as a big benefit, because I think we need to expand Arts throughout the city.
And I agree with that premise, and we do need to expand throughout the city.
I think the roll call was, wasn't the roll call vote requested, so can we please have that roll call?
I'm sorry. Can I?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were just coming to...
I can't hear, so...
I agree with what has been expressed about Art moving throughout the city, and I support that. A lot of the decisions, most of the decisions we make here are to benefit the entire city, and I understand that. So, that's not any kind of an issue whatsoever. And I did walk up to Nathan and shook his hand and said, let's bury the hatchet, and flew forward for what's better for Jeffersonville. I was hoping that, and that's why I nominated us both together, in the spirit of cooperation and goodwill, so...
Ready for the call?
Yeah, I'll be brief. And I spoke with Dustin about this, and I've spoken with Nathan and a few others. A, I wish we would all come together and figure out a better way to handle nomination processes before they come to vote. So, if anybody's got any great ideas, I'd love to hear what those ideas are. Second, I had, and I've told everybody that's asked me about this, I'm concerned about councilperson representing a district being on there, although Dustin and I have kind hashed that out. But two, my biggest concern was, I see the Arts Commission through my eyes as being fantastically successful. I think it's been a great program for the city. I've never heard anybody say a negative word about it. And my concern when Dustin, or anyone else, wanted to get on it, my concern was, I don't want to change the trajectory that it is. And hearing Nathan say that he's going to get off of it if there's just one councilperson on there is, that is definitely changing the trajectory in my eyes. And while it's no knock on Dustin at all, I think he would do a fantastic job. I'm making my intention known that I'm going to vote for Nathan, because I don't think we should be changing the leadership of it. Now, I mean, it's been awesome. Why would we change it? And that's why I was asking earlier, how long are the, because if those things change, then we can have this conversation again, but that's where I'm at.
And I think it's important to point out that it's not one or the other. I don't know why Mr. Samuel would not want to serve if I'm on there, but I think we could serve well together.
We talked about that. You know why, and so does some of the other council members, so don't say you don't know why.
I don't know why we can serve together.
Okay.
Okay, all right. That's it. Let's take our roll call. I don't want to get, I don't want to see disrespect between council. We're all council. Let's try to be respectful. So, let's take this to a vote, please.
So, just to clarify...
Will you do the roll call, please?
We're voting for...
We're voting, there is a motion and a second for Dustin White to be on the commission, and I would like to go ahead and take that to vote, please. Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Sestavny?
No.
Councilperson Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
No.
Councilperson President Gill?
No.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
Nope.
Councilperson Rodriguez?
No.
Five, four.
I'll make a motion to put Nathan, sorry, Vicki. Motion for Nathan to be on the Arts Commission.
Second.
I got a motion and a second for Nathan to be on the Arts Commission. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Okay, no roll calls. Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we have...
Motion for Deb Henderson.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second for Deb Henderson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Deb's on, so we have Nathan, Samuel, Paul Northam, John McCarthy, Deb Henderson, and Melissa Goforth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so I guess the next order of business for that is to figure out how you're going to stagger them. Okay. Let's go to councilperson White for your comments, please, your council comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Samuel, we did have a conversation, and it disheartens me that if I was on the commission, that you would not want to be on there. She can hear you, Miss...
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
In that conversation we had, I believe you had made some statements that I corrected, and my word is always complete.
So that's what you had, had to go on, and I hope you trust that. But if you don't, that's your prerogative. When I walked in and asked you to bury the hatchet, I thought that was an effort of goodwill to start anew, and it disappoints me the way that was received. So, I will continue to seek to work with you in a fashion of, in a, in a way that benefits the city of Jeffersonville. And I hope that you can reach whatever you need to reach to respond and, and respond I have nothing more.
Thank you. Councilperson Sestavny?
Yes, um, at the last planning and zoning meeting, there was a, a proposal to make some zoning changes, or some changes to our zoning ordinance, and that'll be coming to us at the next council meeting. There, it was passed unanimously, and Lisa Gill and myself made a, had a couple concerns that we voiced, but we voted for. I can only speak for myself that I, I still have some concerns, just because I voted for it in the planning and zoning, doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it in the, at the end of the day. I still need to do a little more research, and I would encourage everyone else on the council to, to do some more research, to make sure we understand the impact of those possible changes. I think there's some, definitely some good things, but maybe some not-so-good things. And I know that there are a number of citizens that are concerned about that as well, so I just wanted to put it out there for everybody to, you know, take a little bit of time and educate ourselves on that issue before it comes to the council next time. Thanks.
Councilperson Maples?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, in regards to the, the commission vote, that I had every intention of voting for both Nathan and Dustin. Primarily, I think that Nathan brings up a good point about having citizen involvement, and I think having seven citizens on that board is, is a great way for that voice to be heard. I also think that if a councilperson expresses interest, that it should be entertained and considered, just out of respect for that councilperson, so that's kind of why I voted the way I did tonight. But I'm hopeful that we can move forward and continue to serve on the boards that we do with vigor and with dedication, moving forward. That's it.
Councilperson Maples?
In regards to the vote tonight for the Arts Commission, heard several times, people speak that we need more citizens on boards. And it, it frustrates me a little bit, because the same people speaking about it, it wasn't mimicked in their vote when we were relinquishing the Parks Authority Board. But then when it comes down to this time, we need more citizens. So, that's my frustration with that, and that's all I've said.
Councilperson Hawkins?
I have nothing.
Councilperson Owen?
Nothing that has been said.
Councilperson Samuel?
I just apologize to those in the audience and my fellow council members for having to sit through that circus. It's, it's an embarrassment, I think, to Jeff and the council. We tried to not have that discussion publicly, and I haven't changed my opinion, I haven't changed my comments at all, all the councils are aware of that. But the issue was pushed, which is fine. But it just, I just apologize for that happening to be, to be aired, and I'm looking forward to a positive 2017 with the public arts, with Jeff. Thank you.
Councilperson Rodriguez?
Couple of things. There's a meeting tomorrow for police, is it?
Contract negotiation?
Contract negotiation, okay. And then, the other thing is, I was called out to the soccer field today, so I'm going to get with you, if you got a few minutes afterwards. And Bill, if you'll stick around, and Larry, so we can talk about a few things at the soccer And then, whatever happened with David Stinson, we said that that was going to be coming back to us, and I've noticed that...
No.
Simpson.
He's on the B C.
He's on B C.
He's on B C.
No, the, the guy, Simpson.
Oh, Simpson.
City partners.
Oh, whether he's an, is he an employee or not, did he take the, employee?
So that, I've noticed that sometimes when people come and request something, there's no follow-up. And then we're left without dealing with it, and that was one of the things that, that never came back to us, so thanks, that's all I have.
One more thing, I apologize, I, I overread this. I, I agree with Dustin about burying the hatchet, I want to move forward, and I told him I would, but I, I feel strongly about the Arts Commission and what I said, so I fully expect to work with everybody here on the council, don't, don't expect to have, agree on things all the time, but certainly will try to work with you anywhere I can, any way I can. Thank you.
Okay, on that note, I kind of stopped the discussion. I know there, there seemed to, at one time during the vote is, we are nine adults here, we're all council. I think even if we disagree, disagree, and even if we strongly disagree, we can still be respectful. I, for one, I can't, I can't stand any kind of disrespect to any councilperson. So in the future, if we could just try to remember that, please. And then also, our next meeting will be February 21st at 7:00, because the 20th is President's Day. So our next meeting will be that Tuesday. So hopefully, everybody can make that, and I don't have anything, anything further than to remind you all of that, and I'm hoping, as he had said, we do have a negotiation meeting tomorrow. I hope it goes well, because I'm really hoping to get these two contracts wrapped up soon. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.